Well, this is the second part of a meeting that we held in regards to a new cell phone tower in the Burns Valley area of the city. We want to install a monopine, which is basically a power pole that is disguised to look like a pine tree. And it has several antennas on it in order to make the cell service much more complete in the Clear Lake area.
If it is a big deal, I'm...
It was, we went ahead, quite a bit of research went into it. And the planning commission did go ahead and approve it.
Right back.
A three to one vote.
The proposed project will be located on a leased forty by forty foot area on a twenty-two point nine-nine acre parcel. Verizon Wireless reviewed the feasibility of placing the tower at ten separate locations and determined that each site would not meet Verizon's coverage objectives. An initial study was prepared for soon to see flat, and a mitigated negative declaration is proposed. Mitigation measures to reduce potential impacts to less than significant levels have been incorporated into the project. Use permit and variance considerations. STAT finds that the proposed project is found to be consistent with the general plan and zoning regulations. STAT reviewed the project application and obtained comments from interested agencies, and comments were considered as part of the environmental impact analysis and incorporated into the conditions of approval. STAT recommends amending the resolution to lead number twenty-four, which reads, "Permit potential noise sources such as generators used for power shall be designed and located to minimize noise impacts to surrounding properties. This shall be done by landscaping and feasible around the chain link fence such as vines and/or green shrubbery, or by installing a barrier wall to reduce noise pollution when emergency backup generators in use." Number twenty-five also pertains to the noise complaints, which is why we're asking for number twenty-four resolution to be deleted. Number twenty-five reads, "The substantial noise complaints are received due to the operation of the cell tower facility. The permit holder shall be responsible for submitting and implementing a noise mitigation plan. This plan shall be reviewed and approved by the community development department." STAT has supplied you with copies of the email we received from Betsy Khan. Betsy Khan is with Lake County Clean Water Program. I spoke with public works director and storm water management contact Doug Heron regarding Betsy's email, and because the facility will be constructed above the floodplain enclosed by the construction of a berm and the diesel generator fuel facility is fully self-contained at this time, he believes mitigation requirements have been met. STAT recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. Approve initial study ISO 215 is recommended by STAT approving a mitigated negative declaration. Approve use permit UPO 1-15 to allow the construction of a wireless telecommunication facility based on findings and subject to recommended conditions. Approve variance VO 1-15 is recommended by STAT allowing a variance in the height limitations of thirty-five feet to seventy feet. Approve resolution two zero one five and oh four amending number twenty-four the conditions of approval.
Any questions? Any remarks?
Who owns the property? It says vacant, and I'm not finding, I mean, it's not, I guess...
Yes.
I'm under tab four.
Tab four. There we go.
The property owners are Anthony and Maxine LaForte.
Got him. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On condition number eighteen, it says a Dexter certificate will be required prior to construction and final elevation certificate number one, but you can add final out of the elevation.
Audio?
Yeah. Final. Okay. There we go. I want to add on condition eighteen, final elevation and location certificate. I also have a question on the location of the pole itself. If it falls, it could hit the adjacent property, and I'd like to see if the pole can include twenty. Twenty feet to the east, so, excuse me, to the west, so if it falls, it doesn't hit the adjacent property.
Any other comments? Another question.
Yes, I was wondering what the fall zone was for this, fall zone area for this, and also if the cell towers normally, if they collapse, if something should happen, or do they...
Is there a representative?
Yes, the applicant is here, and this is Jenny.
We'll call on you to just...
Oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments? In that case, we'll open this here in applicant. Need to make you two there.
This is my chances. Good evening. This is on. Can you hear me?
No.
That's on.
It sounds like it's on.
You got to talk into it. Maybe, you know, you can take it out. Oh. Is that better?
Okay. Hello. Okay. Just talking down here.
Sorry, Dr. H.
Can I start with stating your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jenny Walker. I represent Verizon Wireless in this matter. I'm happy to answer your questions, or I can talk a little bit about the site if you'd like, whatever your preference is.
Is your time on the table?
Okay. Well, Verizon Wireless is seeking to improve communication services in the city of Clear Lake. More specifically, Verizon Wireless would like to bring improved cell coverage to the areas along Olympic Drive and Burns Valley Creek. Presently, this portion of the city suffers from poor system capacity and coverage, which causes reoccurring lost calls and ineffective service. To remedy these problems, Verizon proposes to install a monopine facility in order to counter the capacity and coverage issues. Verizon maintains a strong customer base in the city of Clear Lake and strives to improve coverage capacity for both current and potential customers. Additionally, this network development will increase public safety within this area and bring wireless service to areas currently suffering poor service. As demand for reliable wireless service continues to rise, Verizon continues its efforts to build its network to meet customer demand and provide essential coverage necessary to modern day commerce, public safety, and lifestyle. As Ms. Burroughs said, this is a seventy-foot monopine in a forty by forty lease area. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a few questions. Did you want each question, or...
Sure. Whatever your preference is.
I was wondering what the fall zone area, I believe, is called? How the tower collapses, or does it fall over? Does it, you know, disintegrate, but just fall, collapse? And also, I was curious as to how many Verizon or cell towers are in the city?
Sure. So, I don't have specific information about a fall zoning area. I can say that when we go for our building permit, we have to submit certain structures. It's structurally engineered so that it ensures that it does not fall over, and that's a safeguard, you know, to prevent any sort of injury or things like that. So, it is structurally engineered, and those documents are produced with the building permit as part of the normal application. I personally have never seen a cell facility fall, so I'm not quite sure, you know, what direction it falls. Ideally, these do not fall over, and they, you know, they're engineered to stay in one place for a long period of time. And then, your third question was...
How many?
Oh, how many? Well, I think you were provided coverage notes. If not, I have an extra copy as well. But within the city of Clear Lake, I don't know if there's any other towers within the city of Clear Lake proper, but there are some within Lake County. Verizon's currently building their infrastructure in this area, and the way that the facilities work is that they all work in conjunction with each other. So, there is a facility called Clear Lake, which I believe is a little bit higher in elevation and more than five miles roughly away. Ms. Burroughs may be able to speak more directly if there's other facilities, but we did actually just recently get another one approved in more of the downtown Clear Lake area. So, this would just work within the infrastructure to fill the significant gap, you know, that's currently being experienced in this area.
Yeah, we currently have, well, if this one gets approved, we'll have two Verizon locations in Clear Lake. We have an eighteen P and the US Silver as well. Those are both up in the water towers.
Thank you.
Any other comments that you have, Ms. applicant?
I do not. I'm happy to answer questions if they arise, but...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else from the voting, if they'd like to speak? Either for or against?
Vote there?
Go ahead. Yes. Change your name, please.
Well, good evening, everybody. How are you? I'm Dino Mill, trying to coordinate. How's everybody doing? I have a few questions. Well, I absolutely want to have a meeting before this particular hearing tonight, so I can ask some questions answered. As you know, we have a memorandum of agreement with the city and tribe at this time addressing archaeological sites that are in the area and possible disturbance during development. The purpose for that meeting that I've requested was to have a clear procedural and transparent conversation and during the planning process and who's doing what at what time, the policies, and to make sure that communications are going to be fluid, so that at times like this, we all know what's going on. So, I understand that we're going to have that meeting sometime early next week. I appreciate that. So, some of these questions may or not be up to par as to, because that meeting just didn't occur. So, it's a pine tree, it's a monopine tree. Is that consistent with the other trees in the area?
I believe it is. There's also, it's in a walnut grove, and lining the property itself are oak trees and pine trees.
Because I'm a little aware of the oak trees and the walnut tree, pine tree with a little still out there. That's just my opinion. As Rick Windmiller on the list of approved archaeologists?
He is, he's on our list.
Okay. Is the developer planning to have monitors on site for ground disturbance?
I believe they have special inspectors. The permits that we've received so far are, they all state on there that there are special inspectors that are going to be, and we'll find out. We haven't gotten to that point yet. The city of Clear Lake can either recommend the special inspector, or they can, the applicant can recommend him, or pick one from the list after...
And the inspector is the list that we read upon?
Pardon?
Archaeological inspector?
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
We can definitely consider it.
Yes, that would be most important. Everybody knows, maybe people don't know, for those people that don't know, Clear Lake Basin is the most archaeological sensitive area west of the Mississippi. You know, we have ancestors that are in the ground, archaeological artifacts that have been dated back twenty-one thousand years, you know, farther back than the Egyptians and so forth. We have very valuable artifacts here. Five percent of the known archaeological sites are already known at this time, and there's about ninety-five percent that are not. So, as we're getting closer to the waterways of Burns Valley Creek and Clear Lake, the density of those sites gets more, it's more dense. So, it's at this time, I just want to keep this conversation going between, you know, you folks, so we can kind of make sure that the developer is going to have it, still while trying to respect cultural resources, the whole purpose of the memorandum of agreement in the first place. So, but the main important thing is, is I looked at the reports today to double check, and it says that Artipo was trying to be contacted, and we didn't get anything. So, we may have to double check our addresses in our book. That's really going to be important, by the way. So, late in the game, we will, so I'll check back with you folks. And then... One more here, I won't break off. The other thing too is, is about the archaeological resources themselves, the overabundance here in the area, you know. I'll say, make one quick example, then I'll be off, I'll be off your, on your mic here. Over by Homo School, right up the street here at Burns Valley Creek, if you go right across the street, there's an overabundance of obsidian all over that area. That's the way the majority of this town is. So, I haven't been to this particular site, but to find one obsidian lake is kind of amazing, because if you go over to Homo, it's one of the most arid areas around here, you take a walk, it glistens in the sun. It's right there. So, not that I'm saying I don't trust the gentleman or what he is stating in his observation, I think at some point it would probably be better if we had a McCoy-Homo person, such as Artipo, to just to walk alongside and to be feeling reassured that, that what he's saying is the truth. And I'm sorry to say that, the reason why this is brought up is because that hasn't happened to my knowledge here in the city, but it has happened in the area to where there hasn't an archaeologist or an expert of some capacity who has stated he has done his work, and it's not true. I'm really glad that these folks have gone down to the Northwest Information Center to get, get their backup information. I really appreciate that, that's a good thing. Some of these other instances haven't occurred, so we're trying to get into the process sooner, I suppose, would be best. And I don't think that's going to cost anybody in the city. We don't want it to. So, we would like to make sure that the tribes, again, I think that we probably wouldn't be here if the address was public, correct? But anyway, there's some of the things that I'd like to talk to you folks about from Monday or Tuesday, and that way it would be more fluid. We want to be a good partner in the agreement, and we definitely want to make sure that we do all we can to promote the city of Clear Lake to have these opportunities. So, I appreciate your time.
The commission throughout the city wants to cooperate and deploy, and we realize this is a very sensitive area, and there's probably very low area that there isn't something to dig down deep enough. But that doesn't mean that we can't still develop areas, even though that they're part of artifacts there. What we do need to do right here is not...
I agree, I agree, that there's things that can't be done to make sure that the city gets to grow and the cultural resources are still respected. So, thank you for your time. Thank you. And if I could just add, I am a tribal member of the Choctawhead American Drive, so I'm also very sensitive to that as well, so don't worry, we will definitely keep you in the loop.
I'll change your name, please.
Yes, my name is Lori. I was here at the last meeting. I'm a resident in the Burns Valley area, and I have a couple of concerns. One is, I think I told you the last time, I've been through cancer. I have concerns about the radiation from the tower. I know you guys say, or I don't know who, where this has been decided, but three hundred feet is the radius, and I don't really buy that. And a few of my neighbors I've talked to that are right there on the turn of Burns Valley Road, were never notified of any of this, and they're probably more than three hundred feet, but it feels like, it feels like a bigger portion of that area out there should be notified, because they're like, what are you talking about? No idea, it's a tower going in there. So, that's one of my concerns. Another concern is, I would, and my own personal opinion is, our property values will go down to the cell tower, right down the street in the neighborhood. The, I don't know people that want to live near a cell tower. I'm curious about the flood situation out there, how tall the berm that's going to go up out there, because it's, if any of you were out there in December when it rained, it was a nightmare. It was a lot of water, and so I'm curious, is the berm like a foot? Is it five, two feet? I mean...
Well, they actually have to be three feet above the flood plain.
Okay. So, that, okay. And also, just a concern to me is the people that own this property are not, they're like residents there in San Jose, and so it's just kind of like, I sort of feel like, do they really care? Are they in it for money, or are they in it for the good of the community? Just my own thought. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick McMahon, and I'm here representing the Clear Lake Cavalry Chapel Church, which has property that orders the property in question on two separate sides. We're here to raise objections to this project at this point and reserve our rights under the, under the law to seek a court remedy for the following issues. One, we do believe that the notification area at three hundred feet is too small, given that that area, the property itself is a twenty-two acre parcel. At three hundred feet, the tower is seventy-five feet, which is double what a standard tower is. So, I mean, those variances right there, three towers is the distance that you notified everybody, so we do feel that the notification area is too small. One of our properties out there is a property that is subject to development, and as an investment for the church, we feel that having a cell tower right there in the neighborhood in the adjacent property will, A, reduce that property value, and potentially reduce our ability to actually even develop it. I think something like that would come before the planning commission if we chose to. Additionally, we are concerned that these towers are not as safe, both structurally and through electronic admissions, as we're told. I think I heard somebody from the government say, "Don't worry." When somebody from the government says, "Don't worry," I generally worry. No offense to the city management. And we would echo Lori's sentiments that the property owner is an absentee tent landlord, so they don't live locally, they don't have an investment in the community as we do. Our church runs youth programs, we feed hungry and homeless people two days a week, we run a business out of there seven days a week, and we feel, I'm a Verizon customer, love to have better service everywhere that I can, but not at the expense of those issues there. I think there's other places where this tower can be placed that won't have the impact that this area will have. Additionally, with regard to the wild or the shrubbery that's out there, there are a few pine trees, but they're not like the pine trees I think that Verizon plans to develop. If I'm, if I know where the monopine is, you see them on fifty and eighty driving up to Tower all the time, there isn't a tree that looks like that anywhere in this county as far as I know. So, that's going to stick out, plus I don't think any of the trees out there, maybe the highest one might be fifty feet. At seventy-five, this tower is going to stick up twenty-five feet above that, so. And with that, we give these issues to you publicly to reserve our right in the future. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Just to respond to a couple of comments that were made. With regards to RF exposure, I know the city attorney is not here, but just to clarify that a decision can't be based on RF exposure or concerns.
Hold your microphone.
Here we go. Like, caution. With regards to RF issues, that's not a legal basis to make a determination. Those standards are set forth by the federal government. We commissioned a third-party RF exposure study, and we're well within the legal guidelines of permissible exposure levels or emission levels. With regards to the aesthetic design, we actually submitted this project initially as just a monopole, which is just, you know, a metal structure. We worked with STAT to come up with a design that really did fit with the area. There is existing tree coverage, as Ms. Burroughs discussed, and we really tried to find a design that would work both with our goals as well as the city's goals of having it aesthetically blended with the area. We initially actually submitted this thing at another location and worked with STAT to relocate it to their preferred location that was a little bit more out of the floodway or out of floodway, and continued to work with STAT to design a facility that would reach our goals as well as, again, blend aesthetically with the area. So, with going from a monopole to a monopine, it actually increased the overall height of the facility, and that's due to the fact that our antennas are below the seventy-foot mark. I think they're at sixty-five roughly, and the additional five feet or six feet allows for the monopine to have a tree-like shape at the top. So, that increased the overall height of the facility by about five or six feet. But again, we feel that we, you know, have worked with STAT to find a design that kind of works for everybody, and if you have the photo simulations, which I believe were included in your pocket, I also have copies if you need them. It blends pretty nicely, and it makes it minimally visible from the streets. So, just wanted to address those concerns, and if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I do have a question. Ms. Walker, have you seen, I know you haven't seen a tower fall, have you seen one combust?
Combust?
Combust? No, I have not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have that? Shaft want to respond to any issues or raise?
I don't have any comments. Well, I do have one. We were, I do want to talk with Dino about the contacting, the coordination. We do want to make sure that you guys are aware of what's happening. I know that Rick, from the archaeological survey report that was completed, also tried to contact, and we're not quite sure if that person was correct, that they were, they did leave messages and did mail out some requests or comments, so I look forward to getting together with you and talking to you a little bit.
I have some questions. Excuse me. Close the public hearing. Now, that's much better than anything from the research.
I do want to see if the, the, the tower is seventy feet. The tower is located fifty feet on the property line. I'll move it to seventy feet, so if there's no issue with the fall zone, if it was wrong.
Do you have a question on that?
And the reason I think the fall zone is somewhat important is that there are occasions with loan issues that if, that I've experienced that we actually had to do with fall zone study in order to prove that certain structures wouldn't be within the fall zone, and this was for an FHA loan, that didn't go through. So, I think it is important that the pole stays, if there is a pulse, that it stays with the property.
Anybody else? Think we have any other motion?
I move that we improve, would form additional conditions that the tower be moved twenty feet, that I, the condition number eighteen shows the final elevation and location certificate prior to final inspection.
In striking condition...
I'm striking it here.
Striking condition?
Striking condition twenty-four, as was discussed by jury.
All second?
Second.
Second with the adjutant. Yes. Thank you, girl.
Commissioner Slotan?
Aye.
Commissioner Antis?
No.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Chairperson Webb?
And then... One more here, I won't be very long. The other thing, too, is about the archaeological resources themselves, the overabundance here in the area, you know. I'll say maybe one quick example, then I'll be off, I might be off your mic here. Over by Homo School, right up the street here at Burns Valley Creek, if you go right across the street, there's an overabundance of obsidian all over that area. That's the way the majority of this town is. So I have a bid to this particular site, but to find one obsidian flake is kind of vague, because if you go over to almost every area around here, you take a walk, it glistens in the sun. It's right there. So not that I'm saying I don't trust the gentleman or what he is stating in his observation, I think at some point it would probably be better if we had a McCoy Homo person, such as Artipo, to, just to walk alongside and to be feeling reassured that, that what he is saying is the truth. And I'm sorry to say that. The reason why this is brought up is because that hasn't happened to my knowledge here with the city, but it has happened in the area to where there hasn't an archaeologist or an expert in some capacity who has stated he's done his work, and it's not true. I'm really glad that these folks have gone down to the Northwest Information Center to get their backup information. I really appreciate that. That's a good thing. Some of these other instances have an issue, so we're trying to get into the process sooner, I suppose, would be best. And I don't think that's going to cost anybody in the city. We don't want it to. So we would like to make sure that the tribes, again, I think that we probably would be here if the address was properly correct, but anyway, these are some of the things that I'd like to talk to you folks about come Monday or Tuesday, and that way it would be more fluid. We want to be a good partner in the agreement, and we definitely want to make sure that we do all we can to promote the city of Clearlake to have these opportunities. So I appreciate your time.
The commission through the city wants to cooperate fully, and we realize this is a very sensitive area, and there's probably very low area that there isn't something to dug deep enough. But that doesn't mean that we can't still develop areas, even though that they're part of artifacts there. We do need to be very careful.
I agree. I agree that there's things that can't be done to make sure that the city gets to grow and the cultural resources are still respected. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
If I could just add, I am a tribal member of the Choctaw Day American Drive, so I'm also very sensitive to that as well, so don't worry, we will definitely be included.
My name is Lori. I was here at the last meeting. I'm a resident in the Burns Valley area, and I have a couple of concerns. One is, I think I told you the last time, I've been through cancer. I have concerns about the radiation from the tower. I know you guys say, or I don't know who, where this has been decided, but 300 feet is the radius, and I don't really buy that. And a few of my neighbors I've talked to that are right there on the turn of Burns Valley Road, were never notified of any of this, and they're probably more than 300 feet, but it feels like, it feels like a bigger portion of that area out there should be notified, because they're like, what are you talking about? No idea that the tower going in there. So that's one of my concerns. Another concern is, I would, and my own personal opinion is, our property values will go down for cell cover, right down the street in the neighborhood. The, I don't know people that want to live near a cell tower. I'm curious about the flood situation out there, how tall of a berm that's going to go up out there, because it's, if any of you were out there in December when it rained, it was a nightmare. It was a lot of water, and so I'm curious, is the berm like a foot? Is it five, two feet? I mean?
Well, they actually have to be three feet above the floodplain.
Okay. So that, okay. And also, just a concern to me is the people that own this property are not Clear Lake residents, they're in San Luis, and so it's just kind of like, I sort of feel like, do they really care? Are they in it for money, or are they in it for the good of the community? Just my own thought. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick McMahon, and I'm here representing the Clear Lake Cavalry Chapel Church, which has property that orders the property in question on two separate sides. We're here to raise objections to this project at this point and reserve our rights under the law to seek a court remedy for the following issues. One, we do believe that the notification area 300 feet is too small, given that that area, the property itself is a 22-acre parcel. At 300 feet, the tower is 75 feet, which is double what a standard tower is. So, I mean, those variances right there, three towers is the distance that you notify everybody, so we do feel that the notification area is too small. One of our properties out there is a property that is subject to development, and as an investment for the church, we feel that having a cell tower right there in the neighborhood in the adjacent property will, A, reduce that property value, and potentially reduce our ability to actually even develop it. I think something like that would come before the planning commission if we chose to. Additionally, we are concerned that these towers are not as safe, both structurally and through electronic admissions, as we're told. I think I heard somebody from the government say, "Don't worry." When somebody from the government says, "Don't worry," I generally worry. No offense to the city management. And we would echo Lori's sentiments that the property owner is an absentee tent landlord, so they don't live locally, they don't have an investment in the community as we do. Our church runs youth programs, we feed hungry and homeless people two days a week, we run a business out of there seven days a week, and we feel, I'm a Verizon customer, love to have better service everywhere that I can, but not at the expense of those issues there. I think there's other places where this tower can be placed that won't have the impact that this area will have. Additionally, with regard to the wild, or the shrubbery that's out there, there are a few pine trees, but they're not like the pine trees I think that Verizon plans to develop. If I know where the mono pine is, you see them on 50 and 80 driving up to Tower all the time, there isn't a tree that looks like that anywhere in this county, as far as I know. So that's going to stick out, plus I don't think any of the trees out there, maybe the highest one might be 50 feet. At 75, this tower is going to stick up 25 feet above that, so. And with that, we give these issues to you publicly to reserve our right in the future. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Just to respond to a couple of comments that were made. With regards to RF exposure, I know the city attorney is not here, but just to clarify that a decision can't be based on RF exposure or concerns.
Go ahead, push your mic.
Here we go. Like caution was. With regards to RF issues, that's not a legal basis to make a determination. Those standards are set forth by the federal government. We commissioned a third-party RF exposure study, and we're well within the legal guidelines of permissible exposure levels or emission levels. With regards to the aesthetic design, we actually submitted this project initially as just a mono pole, which is just, you know, a metal structure. We worked with staff to come up with a design that really did fit with the area. There is existing tree coverage, as Ms. Burrows discussed, and we really tried to find a design that would work both with our goals as well as the city's goals of having it aesthetically blended with the area. We initially actually submitted this thing at another location and worked with staff to relocate it to their preferred location that was a little bit more out of the floodway, or out of the floodway, and continued to work with staff to design a facility that would reach our goals as well as, again, blend aesthetically with the area. So with going from a mono pole to a mono pine, it actually increased the overall height of the facility, and that's due to the fact that our antennas are below the 70-foot mark. I think they're at 65 roughly, and the additional five feet or six feet allows for the mono pine to have a tree-like shape at the top. So that increased the overall height of the facility by about five or six feet. But again, we feel that we, you know, have worked with staff to find a design that kind of works for everybody, and if you have, the photo simulations, which I believe were included in your pocket, I also have copies if you need them. It blends pretty nicely, and it makes it minimally visible from the streets. So just wanted to address those concerns, and if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have a question. Ms. Walker, have you seen, I know you haven't seen a tower fall, have you seen one combust? Comba, so must. No, I have not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have that? She wants to respond to any issues that there is.
I don't have any comments. Well, I do have one. We were, I do want to talk with Dino about the contacting, the coordination. We do want to make sure that you guys are aware of what's happening. I know that Rick, from the archaeological, the archaeological survey report that was completed, also tried to contact, and we're not quite sure if that person was correct, that they did leave messages and did mail out some requests or comments, so I look forward to getting together with you and talking to you about that.
We're close to public hearing. Now, that's most careful of anything from the officials.
I do want to see if the, the tower is 70 feet. The tower is located 50 feet from the property, and I'll move it to 70 feet, so there's no issue with the fall zone if it was wrong.
Any comments on that?
And the reason I think the fall zone is somewhat important is that there are vacations with loan issues that if, that I've experienced that we actually had to do with fall zone study in order to prove that certain structures would be within the fall zone, and this was for an MHA loan, that didn't go through. So I think it is important that the pole stays, that there is a fall zone that is stationed.
Do we have any other motion?
I moved everything through with the form of additional conditions that the tower will be moved 20 feet, that the condition number 18 shows the final elevation and location certificate prior to final inspection.
Can I strike?
I'm striking.
Striking condition 24 is what was discussed by the jury.
Second with me, it changes. Thank you, Lori.
Commissioner Slotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Antis?
No.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Chairperson Webb?
Just a couple of things. Wanted to update, let you know about some updates that we've done to the city website.
Thank you, folks, for coming. I know you don't agree with us, but we appreciate you coming down and expressing your views. You're welcome. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's right. I just want to let you know that we've updated the city website, a few things. The medical marijuana ordinance is now posted on the website. The latest fiscal year-end 2016 budget is also now been posted on the website, and most, I don't know, most importantly, but very significantly, the Clear Lake Nistle Code is now posted on the website. So, you know, we don't have to go flipping through reams of paper to figure out what's going on. It's all there, and that's a significant achievement, so wanted to let you know about that. Just a couple of the fun things, we've added some photo galleries for the Fourth of July and for the farmer's market, so that's on there now. And just to talk about the next meeting real quickly for August 4th. Previously, I've been talking this, we were coming forward with a wireless ordinance for your consideration. Previously, it had been suggested for it to go straight to the city council, but I've asked for it to go through the channels of going to the planning commission first, so you guys will be seeing it. We put it on issued the notice in the newspaper, so I have that coming forward to you on August 4th for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else that you want to add?
I'm good.
Okay. Vacation. Close to me?
Six thirty-three. It's only way, without fall.